Special group here this morning representing the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. They represent several different schools in our, in our city. Would this little group, y'all stand? Let us recognize you. Thank you all for what you do. Thank you for being here.[14.01][14.01][applause] Okay, we'll call to order the Jackson City Council May First Meeting 2018. And we're gonna call on Councilman Johnny Dodd for the invocation and pledge. If you would, please rise.
If I can get Pastor Ronald, Pastor Matt Mariah, Baptist Church, please to come up and lead us in a word of prayer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Goodness gracious. You turn to God, our Father, we come to Him, we worship Him, we all stand. Thank you.
Secondly, we need you, we cannot make it without you.
Yes.
It's in you that we live, it's in you that we move, it's in you that we have our being. Matt said we could do nothing without you. I want to say thank you for waking us up this morning. And then for those of us that got up, we thank you for that as well. Right now, Lord, we pray for our city, the wonderful, beautiful city of Jackson, Tennessee. We ask that you give clarity, at the same time, give wisdom and knowledge to our leaders as well as our followers. Let this meeting go with nothing but joy and peace and harmony, that all of us work together. For we realize and understand it takes a teamwork to make dream work. We love you, we adore you, we magnify your name. If we had 10,000 tongues, we couldn't even thank you enough for what you've already done. But, Lord, we thank you right now. In the name of our Father, Son, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We got it, Mr. Mayor. Item four is approval of minutes for April 3, 2016, City Council Meeting. Council members save a copy of those minutes. If there are any additions or corrections, we can take those at this time. And if not, if there's no objection, we'll go ahead and approve those minutes. Item five is invitation of public comment. And to the audience, I would tell you if there's any item under new business that you would like to address the council, if you'll let me know at that time, I'll be happy to call on you and get you up and let you, let you speak to the council. We have two proclamations this morning. One is National Women's Health Week. We have Margaret Murray, Mary Russell, Julian Stone here for that proclamation. If y'all join me right down here, we'll get that read. We're as National Women's Health Week celebrates the extraordinary progress in women's health and recognizing that more needs to be done to safeguard the health of women for generations to come. And we're as National Women's Health Week celebrates the efforts of national and community organizations such as the Scarlet Rope Project, a Mother's Love, and A Step Ahead of West Tennessee. It's volunteers and social health and other services provided to improve awareness of key women's health issues. And we're as women can promote good, good health and prevent disease and illness by taking simple steps to improve their physical, mental, social, and spiritual health. We're as women's health remains a priority for families, communities, and government, and our commitment to keeping women healthy is stronger than ever. Now therefore, I, Jerry, guess, Mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim May 13th through the 19th, 2018, as National Women's Health Week, and May 7th, 2018, as Women's Health Day. So it's an honor for me to present this to you girls. Thank you for the awareness program that y'all put together to, to honor this week. So congratulations to you and thank you.[271.33][271.33][applause]
Thank you, Mayor. As we know, that women's health is very important. As women are the bearers of life in our community, they're also the nurturers of life once life is here. And we know that it's important for them to take care of their health so that they can continue to take care of others, their families, and the employers and employees around them. We take time to honor this week, National Women's Health Week, because all three of the organizations that are listed here, Mothers, a Mother's Love, and a Scarlet Rope, and A Step Ahead, we all work independently, working with women's health. But at times, we work collaboratively to make sure that women are getting the necessary things that they need in life as far as health is concerned. On May 17th, 2018, we are having a lunch and learn for women, and we're asking all women to come out and join us that day to learn more about our programs, because we realize we're fairly new in the community, but we want you to know and use us as a resource. So let's come out and celebrate. Just go to Eventbrite.com and register. The event is free, and we're gonna be right downtown at St. Luke's Church. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council.
Next proclamation, let me call Shawn Powers Up from Rifa, I think, who's here with us this morning to accept this proclamation on behalf of our letter carriers here in our, in our city, who'll be sitting aside today to collect food as they pick up and deliver your mail. Every year on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect nonperishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, and distributing the donations to local food banks. And whereas the letter carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those they serve. Since the pilot drive was held in 1991, more than 1.5 billion pounds of food have been collected. And whereas we'd like to recognize all letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities, all the food collected in our community stays in our community, and we support carriers' efforts to help those in need in our community. Now therefore, I, Jerry, guess, Mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May the 12th, 2018, as letter carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive Day, and encourage the citizens of our community to support the food drive by placing nonperishable food items in or near your mailbox on food drive day. Your letter carrier will pick it up while delivering the mail, and together we can all help feed our hunger. Now, thank you all, and I know Rifa will be the recipient of much of that food that's picked up on that particular day. So thank you all so much.[483.41][483.41][applause]
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I've never met anyone who planned on being on the receiving end of aid. I've never met anyone who planned on receiving food because they did not have any at their house. But sadly enough, there's people in the community who find themselves in that shape. And the letter carriers are doing something about that. They have set aside the second Saturday in May as a day to collect food that the Jackson area, the Jackson community is willing to donate to places like Rifa. The Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive is a big food drive. It's the nation's largest food drive. Last year in 2017, over 23,000 pounds of food were raised right here in Jackson. And this is the busiest day of the year, I would say so, for the letter carriers here in Jackson. Not only do they go out six days a week and deliver the mail, on this day, they do their job and also do something else for somebody else. And we just want to say thank you for their extra hard work on the second Saturday in May. Thank you so much.[549.41][549.41][applause]
We have two individuals here who head up our TIF districts and being our master developers. Let me call on CRA District One, which will be, make a presentation, Hal Crocker, to the council. Hal, let me ask you to come up and kind of inform the council of where we are, and where you are, and where we're going.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before the two developers come up, if it's all right with the council and you'd like for Mr. Powell to give us an overview of the community redevelopment districts, TIF districts, the measurable outcomes of our spectrum, just give us an overview.
Dan, you do that?
I can do that.
I'll pull up the chair there. Y'all be fine. Chris?
I'll, I'll change places with him so he can get the good mic when we get ready. We started this process back in 2009 with District One, and then 2010 with District Two. The object of the TIF districts are to provide resources to go back into the districts that they're collected in, to help in the redevelopment efforts. What happens is when we establish the TIF, they look at the base taxes that are collected for that year. And as that base changes, if it goes up, then we capture whatever taxes are above what the base year is. We collect those, and those are used in the district where they're collected. And so those help, help us fund our redevelopment efforts, and that money is not used for anything else, but pumped right back into our, our redevelopment efforts to cause us to, help us to do other things. So we are, also have, with the CRA districts, District One, District Two, we have a Section 108 dollars. In District One, they were used for public infrastructure. In District Two, those TIF dollars were used for economic development opportunities, also to spur some residential development. And we also have some local funds that were put in the districts, too, to help in those matters. With those three resource funds, we are able to carry out the redevelopment efforts for both districts.
The boundaries of both districts?
District One is, is predominantly the downtown and Atlanta area. District Two is primarily the, what's considered as traditionally East Jackson.
Thank you.
What's the line for, where do they expire the districts?
Those TIF districts are established for 25 years, and so we collect those funds over that period. Then that TIF district expires, and then those dollars go back into the regular general fund.
I have a question if I may. Good morning.
Yes, sir.
Relative to residential development, how important is that?
Well, it's vitally important to what we do. Commercial developers are, you know, one of the things that they look at when they're looking at whether an area is good for development is rooftops, because it doesn't do well to have a retail business if you don't have customers. So they found through looking at various buying trends and consumer trends, that the more rooftops you have within, you know, a quarter mile of the store, the better the results of that store are. So that's one of the things we look at. And so we've tried to improve the residential presence here in downtown. We have more people living in the downtown area, and the businesses are benefiting from that. In District Two, we're trying to look at ways to enhance the residential developments that we have, and also establish new residential developments that are more market rate for people that want to come back to East Jackson.
Right. And, and that's my concern. And initially, did we set any benchmarks relative to residential development?
Well, the, the problem with, with residential is twofold. One is the predominant, you know, funding source for us is HUD. And HUD is great about establishing programs, but sometimes they're poor in developing guidelines and how those programs work. And so what's happened with District Two is you have funding that can be used for residential development, but if you put $1 of HUD money in it, then it has to be 51% low and moderate income. Well, that's a problem for East Jackson, because our, you know, the predominant residential type we have is low and moderate income. So we're looking at a way to diversify our residential base in, in East Jackson, and the HUD program doesn't allow us to do that. So we're trying to find more creative ways to do that, and it's been somewhat difficult to do that. And also, District Two, when we established it, its predominantly goal, after meeting with the residents and talking to people, was economic development. So we have to do things that produce jobs. And so we have to be careful that our residential development, things we fund there, don't supersede the, the economic development activities that we have. So, so it's been a balance.
So we didn't set any benchmarks?
No, because again, we had to keep it somewhat limited because of the economic development thrust. The majority of the money had to be spent in economic development activities. Also, the HUD program, it was not from a lack of trying, because our master developer, David Hunt, we had looked at some residential developments, trying to establish them, and, and we could not get HUD to, to bend on that provision.
Okay, so, so we've made several attempts.
We have. Many attempts.
Another question I had, am I correct in understanding that Section 108 had some job requirements as well?
It does.
Okay. Could you talk a bit about that?
With HUD, it's, for, for every dollar of Section 108 dollars, which are basically CBDG funds.
Right.
So it carries the same rules that CBDG funds do. Section 108 is a program where you can advance your CBDG funds to be able to collect enough where you can do something with them, instead of waiting for each little part of it to come up with years. So it carries the same requirements, and, and those requirements are for every dollar of CBDG funds you use, you, or, or, let me say, for every $35,000 of, of Section 108 dollars, you have to produce one job.
Okay.
So everything is calculated based on the amount of money that you use and how many jobs are being produced.
Right. And, and are those numbers kept in both of those districts?
They are. Now with the, with District One, it was more toward public infrastructure, so.
Right.
So it wasn't, it wasn't as lean toward job and job creation. District Two has been more job creation, so each entity that we've talked with, in their development contract, they have to produce the number of jobs that HUD requires, and those jobs have to be low and moderate income jobs, and they have to be, if, if possible, produced from the area that they're in.
That was my next question. Thank you.
Any other question? Any other question to stand?
I was gonna say, and also, we've been helped by Tennessee Job Center, and, and they've, they've helped vet the employers, the employees that, that we're using for our programs. We've used tho, that program to help us get, get employees that meet those qualifications, and they, they have certified them for us, so that's helped.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions to stand? While is it the mic? Okay, thank you, Stan. Hal, Chris? Henry Turley, I may add, is a partner in healthy communities with, with Hal, and we appreciate Henry over the years.
Hi, thank yous for having us today. And I'm always happy to talk about what we're doing in the downtown area and in District One. Some of my, some of my slides are kind of covered by what Stan was talking about. 2003 tornado came through town, I don't know if anybody noticed it. And, and it had some devastation, it had some heartbreak, but it also made some opportunity for some good things to happen. The site that we were given as the master developer was to redevelop the area where the old Public Works was, off of Shannon and, and Farrar Street. And we were selected in 2009 by the city council and by the CRA, which was a newly-formed entity to look for ways to revitalize our, our central city area and bring new life back to that. We came up with a plan of bringing different aspects to improve the quality of life for the citizens that decided to live in this area, and we named that Jackson Walk. And, and what we were looking for was ways to bring a lot of different things to the area that were missing, that would create an environment where people would want to live. So we, we developed a retail area, we, we worked with Farmer's Market, we worked with the hospital to develop the concept of the lift and the fitness center, the wellness center, the walk-in clinic. We looked for different kinds of amenities to improve the way it is. We looked for walkability and connectivity for people. We wanted to create an environment where people could live and they could walk to different things that they could do without getting in their car. They could shop, they could go out to eat, they could be entertained, they could go to the dry cleaners, they could, they could go to the grocery store. All of these elements bringing together to create an environment where people wanted to live. And then we started working on the residential aspect and, and creating homes that fit the neighborhood, that, that, that brought new life back to an area that was distressed and dilapidated, to get rid of blight. That photo, that's a picture of what the dog park looked like before the dog park was built. It was a, it's a brown site that had some environmental challenges and limited on what we could do there. And we created, you know, a dog park within walking distance. Obviously, there's a, the, the amp is also on that same brown site. The city developed that, and we, we worked together to make that piece successful, to bring people downtown for community-free concerts every couple of weeks during the spring, summer, and early fall. We have a downtown fitness trail where you can, this a mile and a half, where that, that crosses through downtown area, goes along the Central Creek, and passes the dog park, goes through the Farmer's Market and back, a way to encourage the activity for people, a healthier lifestyle, and a way to use walking to connect you with all the aspects of the community we're creating, plus the downtown area. We, we developed a plan that would look for, how do, how do we connect University of Memphis with the downtown area? We looked at corridors that would, down Morgan Street and now Dedrick Street, to help make those linkages, to create a attractive streetscape that you could walk down and feel safe, bringing the residents of Atlanta and the, the students and staff at the University of Memphis, a way to easily connect with what we're creating in the Jackson Walk area and our downtown community. We, when we, when we, when we were selected in, as the, as the master developer, we developed a five-year plan with priorities and goals for the CRA, and, and looking for a way to, to have some things that made us accountable. When we presented this, this slide is five years old, and we said that we would complete 40 new homes, we would look for ways to improve the infrastructure in the neighborhoods, encourage other people to invest in their homes, and we would stimulate ongoing private development, bring new dollars to the area. So far, we've built 34 new homes in our first five years since we broke ground and, or completed the lift. About approximately $6 million in value for property taxes in the area that contributes to the TIF. We've had $2.5 million that has been reinvested in existing housing stock, in renovations and improvements. The, and we, part of that funding was all private market rate, but a portion of it was, was done with the help of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program to help build some of the houses. So we try and serve all economic levels, some, some that's incentivized, to help bring people, opportunities for housing that might not be able to afford to buy their first home, and then market rate homes that, that help lift the neighborhood up economically. These are some of the houses you can see. On, on one side, you can see the home that was there before, and on the other side, you can see the home that's replaced it. Those are the residents that now live in our neighborhood, that, and, and I guess that's really the primary goal. The primary goal is to bring people back where our, these neighborhoods have been abandoned, and, and blight has set in, and it's becoming a healthy environment. And to make that, I guess the central thing for a healthy community is to create healthy neighborhoods, to create an environment of health where people want to live. And look at that guy. Yeah, that's living in, that's building a house. These are some of the renovated homes that we've done, or we've recreated. That one, that, this, this slide is particularly important to me, because it represents something that we created an environment, but we didn't have to do. We have, we have several people that have started spending money in their, in our neighborhood, and they're spending it because they have confidence that the neighborhood is good for their investment. So the gentleman that owns that house, Mario Ergoin, he bought that house for $8,500 about five years ago. And he bought the house next door, he's been renovating the house next door for kind of his dream home, he just sold that house for $190,000. This is, this, this house was built in 1905 originally. We just did a historic restoration on it. It's now available for sale, and it is an NSP home that helped make it possible for us to do the restoration. And we're looking for family that qualifies under the guidelines of the NSP program to bring their family and live in our neighborhood. We have recently also qualified to participate in the state Tennessee Housing Development Agency's blight elimination program, and we're looking for opportunities in the district that we represent, and we're working with some of the people from District Two, looking for ways that we can eliminate blight by, by acquiring and tearing down distressed housing and making room for new things to happen. As everybody knows that's here, that we've been working on our second phase, so High Point Apartments, which is 121-bedroom units, has just been completed on Dedrick Street. It was a $10 million private investment to build that. We are currently, we, we started occupying about 30 days ago, we now have 40 units occupied, and we're on target to do that. The, the benefit of what we do with the multifamily is the impact of bringing new citizens to the, to this part of our city. I guess so far, we brought about 350 new citizens, new residents to this area. The High Point Development should bring, once the single-family home component, 40, 40 new homes, and the, the apartments are all complete and fully occupied, we should bring another 400. And then you have the ancillary addition of the other people that come back to the neighborhood that invest in the existing housing stock, the people that do that independently, that we believe that over the next few years, we'll have as many as 2,000 new residents in the downtown area before we're, before our complete in our 70 proportion of plan. This represents two corridors that we're primarily working on. As you see, on, on the green corridor, which is Dedrick Street, the city has invested in doing some infrastructure improvements and repaving. We've also invelt, invested in that, the CRA, and, and private development funds to help leverage that. But we look at Dedrick as being a prime corridor to link, link the University of Memphis campus and its growth, the, the Southern Atlanta neighborhood, Jackson Walk and downtown together. We, we think this is, this is gonna be key to University of Memphis's long-term growth, to rebuild and strengthen the neighborhood where they've decided to invest. So far, the University of Memphis has invested $20 million in improvements to the campus. They've gone from 300 students when they started to 11, to, I think, 1,050 students at this latest semester. Their long-term plan is to get to 2,500 students within the next five years. We see that as a dynamic engine for growth for our mid-city area. So that's what we're doing in, in our area of town, and we're, we're proud to be a part of that. And, and we, we feel very, very honored that our project has received both national and regional and statewide recognition for the design as part of our, as, as recognition for the efforts of our team, our architectural firm, our engineering firm, the TLM, LRK, and in particular, the support and the stewardship of the Community Redevelopment Agency in helping make us successful. Thank you.
Hal, Chris, thank you all for your presentation. It's pretty obvious as to the success of, of... It's pretty obvious as to the success of, of District One and what has occurred there. Remind the council that even after all that construction has taken place, that the city has not yet received in the general fund, the proceeds of taxes because it's going back into the, into the redevelopment agency to continue to build that district. So, been very, very successful, and as Hal said, you know, there's been a number of state and nationwide awards presented to, not only the city, but to, to health communities for their effort in that district. So, Hal, Chris, give my, give our best to, to Henry if you would, and thank him for his.
A small aside, Jackson Walk retail shops had about, had approximately six million dollars in taxable sales last year. And I guess there is that opportunity as we grow the central city, that we've become something of a regional attraction with people from, you know, Bolivar and Selmer and Lexington and Humboldt to come to our farmer's market already and to help make an opportunity for other shopping while they're here in town.
And also, I'll add the job component. We, we keep a year-to-year report of how many jobs have been added since Jackson Walk was created, and we're at about two hundred and ten jobs that were created just in the Jackson Walk area between the Lift Wellness Center, our apartments, Grubs, Rockin' Dough, all of our shops and whatnot.
Any questions of Hal or Chris while they're here from council?
Hal, I grew up in that area over there on Union Avenue, and it's just amazing to what it is now as compared to even back then. I think there on the Feth Street, we had a lot of seat company, U-Tolons and a bar and Camp Supermarket, I think, is what was right there on that corner. To see it like it is now is just amazing, and I thank you for the job that you and your people have done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hal.
I wanted to ask a question, and Mr. Crocker, it might be a better question for Stan, but I just want to echo what Councilman Cisco said. It is beautiful, I mean, it's just such an asset, and I've been in some of those apartments, and, and it's just amazing. As far as voting districts, Stan, you know, you mentioned, Mr. Crocker, that you've added some apartments on Dedrick Street, a new corridor, and on my list of constituents, I've got some voters that list the Jackson Walk as where they live, and I'm trying to figure out what part of that is in my District One voting area. I might want to live there sometime, who knows? But no, I'm just curious about that because they're on my, you know, I thought maybe it was the Dedrick Street.
I can look, I don't have a map in front of me, but I can look and get that information too.
Because I had just assumed that none of that would be, you know, in District One, although maybe the farmer's market is, you know, it, it may be.
I'll, I'll read that.
If you can do that. And the only other thing, Mr. Crocker, and I think this would be more something that we'd try to get somebody to donate, but I, I go to a lot of those concerts at AMP, I love that. But occasionally, it does rain, and thankfully, you all never cancel, but, but you just move in under the pavilion and people bring their chairs in. We need some kind of little portable stage, though, just something so that the performers can even be on some kind of little portable stage under that pavilion, you know, nothing like the Miss Tennessee pageant, I'm not talking, but just something that can be moved in and out pretty easily because some of the musicians say, you know, they, they can't see all the crowd and the crowd can't see them, so I think that's something that maybe even.
You know, I'd like to take credit for everything that happens down there, but you know, Mr. Exum with the, is the chairman of the AMP committee and does a wonderful job really making that stuff happen. And, but I'll, I'll be glad.
Yeah, and of course, I've got a vested interest. My grandson's band plays there some, and, and I got more interested in it. He complained about it a lot, and I said, well, I'm gonna go see you, and, and he's right, it is, it is harder to see them a little harder, but, but other bands have expressed, you know, that they're glad you don't cancel, but they wish, you know, they had something there. Other than that, it is, it's just beautiful, and I really can't wait until we get that roundabout, you know, because you're really going to be able to see it and take a little longer to see it, and it, it's really something, so thank you.
Thank you, Hal and Chris. On District Two, we have the master developer here, David Hunt. David, if you would come up and speak to the council about that particular district.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Morning.
Councilman.
Morning.
First of all, I want to thank, say good morning to each of you, and thank you, thank you each one of you for your service. Thank you for allowing me to be here again, to talk, to come before this body and talk about the progress and the things we're doing in District Two. There have been several, several, over the last three years or four years I've been master developer, hit and misses, and quite a few of those developments, the first two years I was master developer, we desperately tried, as Stan stated earlier, to pursue rooftops because being a developer and being a hoteler and retail center operator as I am, I know rooftops are very important for economic development and creating jobs. Unfortunately, the program that Stan mentioned does not allow us to go out of any type of homes or any kind of development of that sort because of the way the grant was written and primarily because of the way HUD administers the program. It's very confusing and it's very difficult to get around and stand in the CRA, and I, we tried every way possible to mitigate some of the rules, but at the end of the day, it was just not possible. So I basically turned my attention to what I thought we could do, which was the primary purpose of District Two, and the challenge was to try to create jobs through economic development and through retail. Obviously, I've lived in Jackson twenty-five, twenty-seven years now, and in my lifetime, I think the only thing that I've ever seen come in East Jackson for, for retail in my lifetime has been the Family Dollar Store, that when I first became on board, we started working with them and they came to that market. Obviously, when you have that length of time, it's very challenging to go out and recruit retail to come over to a market when you haven't proved that you can produce dollars. And the most important thing about any market, as Stan mentioned earlier, for development is always and foremost a copycat. People build retail and people build developments in areas where there's already been a proven way to make dollars. Someone else is in that market making money, so therefore, I can come in and duplicate what they're doing and just do it better. That's capitalism, that's the way America operates, and that's, that's a system that I love and I, I enjoy. Obviously, when you have a market like East Jackson, it causes issues because you don't have a platform by which to build from. So basically, what we've done in the last two and a half, three years is try to build a platform to allow us to start generating dollars, to start doing things, to, to show people that you can actually have businesses in East Jackson and start making money in the market. And so with that being said, the first, one of the first things that we've done as far as retail was the East Jackson corridor, I'm sorry, with the East Chester corridor. As you know, you guys have invested tremendous dollars in that quarter, beautifying it, making it look nice. So one, one of my first objectives was to try to do some new retail on that corridor to bring a retail center there, to do some type businesses there. So we reshed out and were fortunate enough to entice a couple of people to come in to look at doing retail centers. One was the Hutchinsons out of Birmingham, Alabama, who had a very successful business down there. They came here, they're originally from here, they came here and CRA worked with them and approved their site and approved giving them, I think, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of incentive for them to come into the market and to, basically, we was going to convey the land to them, they just going to build a retail center. But as always, the devil is in the details. It's very difficult to get financing, it's very difficult to get buildings and land comped at the right price when there's nothing over there to comp it against. So it created, it created unintended learning curve for them, and they tried as much as they could, but they just really could not ever establish a bank financing, they needed to move forward. A lot of it also, the fact that they don't have the liquidity that they needed to, in order to pursue the bank loan. So many folks come to us that we've worked with, and you don't know these things because my job is simply to work with them, try to help them, push them through, but they don't have the capital necessary to invest to get started. In the CRA, we have incentive for everyone that comes on board and tries to do some of the things that are in our plan. Unfortunately, our money comes on the back end once it's done. We can't give it to you on the front end. You have to produce, you have to meet codes, you have to do all those things on the front end, and then we step in. And because of that fact, and that should not be changed, if you start, I just want to make sure we clear about this, in no way should we change that regulation, that guideline, because this is economic development, and you have the brain skin in the game, as any banker would tell you, right Ross? Before we can come and do things for you, that's just the way business works, otherwise you have chaos. And so, we did a project right there, like I said, right there on East Chester, it fell through because of financing. We did another project right there on, on, what is that, Phillips, on Phillips Street there? There's going to be an oil change in location, going to be some retail, going to be a gas station, had tremendous possibilities, but the young man decided to pull out because of the funding problems he had. We also moved over to White Hall to Mr. Croon's, who currently operates a detail shop there. He was, he was hoping to expand his location, put in a couple of oil bays to do oil changes, to do lube jobs, to do tire changes, things like that, things that are desperately needed in this market, and he also is going to create about two or three jobs with this. Unfortunately, he and I spoke again last night, and he's, he's not able to pursue, not able to receive fund, bank funding for the same reasons. He didn't have the liquidity, didn't have the capital to go out and make the improvements in order for us to come in and help him, and it's just the nature of the beast that we find. But there have been some successes, thank God, and we feel like that we're going in the right direction with some of these successes. As you know, we own and we build retail centers all across West Tennessee and primarily in Middle Tennessee and East Tennessee. So my wife and I decided to take the onus in some property that we owned on White Hall, and we went out there and we developed that property. We got a young man named Don Lloyd, he built the Huddle House there. He opened last January fourth, I believe. He had some hurdles the first year because quite frankly, people are just not used to spending money in their own neighborhoods. And so he went through some trial and tribulations for a little while in the summertime. He learned, he was the first time he was a hoteler, I'm sorry, restaurateur. He learned how to operate the restaurant, he learned how to do a better job at the restaurant, and now he's doing extremely, extremely well, providing a great service and a great assets. His success will only enable us to move forward, to bring more retail to the market. Also with that, on this, next door to that, we built a brand-new retail center. I think it's number, number, yeah, number three. We built a twenty thousand square foot retail center right on the corner of White Hall and F E Wright Drive, if you'd ever come up here. And when I first built it, we started soliciting tenants, and we've had opportunity to rent that out multiple times to tenants. We chose not to rent that out because the most important thing you could do in a retail center is make sure that you've got strong, viable tenants that bring value to the community. And so I would not allow my space, even though we had invested and we hated having our money sit there, we had invested, and we wanted to make sure we brought the right kind of tenants in. We originally had a contract with Dr. Wright to come in and bring his, bring, move his dentist's office to this location. As you know, Dr. Wright got ill, and we just could not make the investment to do a build-out in his space for him with this, not knowing what his long-term viability was going to be. So basically, I went out and, and combed three or four state area and found to me a dentist group, and the dentist group we found is called Doug Family Dentistry. We're building out their space now as we speak. They would be in the space by the end of, end of June, first of July. They're, they're hiring seven, they've already, they've already hired two doctors to move to our area, and they're in the process now of, of hiring another seven employees to, to occupy the location. This dentist, this dentist firm is part of M D Two Dental, they have about two hundred and ten locations nationwide. They're out of Dallas, Texas, they're extremely well-funded, they're, they already, they come, matter of fact, they'll be in town Thursday at my office, meeting with the radio stations and start the funding and all those things. Along with them, we have been fortunate enough to bring Loving Arms. Loving Arms is a company very similar, maybe to Madison Haywood, where they, where they take care of disabled young folks, adults, and they have offices in Memphis, they have a small officer in Jackson, but they have an office in Memphis and also Nashville. They've decided through recruitment that they wanted to own their own space, so we were fortunate enough to take this center and convert it to office condos, retail condos, and we sold them basically seven thousand square feet. We're building out their space now. They would be occupying at the end of June and moving into it the end of June. And like I said, they're going to hire fifty employees, and this is going to become their, their operation for the entire east and middle Tennessee, so they can cover Nashville on one side and Memphis on the other side, so it's going to be a great location for us there, having them there. And also, we, we also had a contract with Bennigan's to have Bennigan's move here, but I've decided to release Bennigan from the contract because I just didn't think, based on the sales at the Huddle House, that we could get the per-dollar sales ticket that we needed to, to be able to satisfy Bennigan's. The average Bennigan ticket is twenty-five to twenty-seven dollars, and that was not, in my mind, just doable in this market. So instead of me bringing someone in to fail and not do well, I thought it'd be best if we brought somebody in that had a ticket that was affordable, that meet, that met the market, and also brought success to the market, because having a big turnaround is not in our benefit. We have one space that we don't have accounted for yet, and that would most likely, Eden, Eden Smith is finishing up that lease for me now, that would most likely be a, a local wireless customer vendor that'll be going to that space. So we hope by the end of summer, we have a completely hundred percent leased retail center, and with all good customers to bring new value to the market, I'm hoping that those customers would do extremely well to, to show that you can generate dollars and you can make money in the East Jackson Quarter, which are only going to add to our ability to bring retail to the market, and that's what it's really all about. This is also going to benefit the Huddle House because you're going to have more activity, more people coming to this market, more reason to come to this market, and we're hoping that since we don't have the rooftops, we can bring value to the folks that work in this market. If you think about the East Jackson Quarter and all the great manufacturing jobs and all the jobs in this market, about sixty-five percent of all the middle-class jobs in West Tennessee is in this market. Unfortunately, those folks get in their cars and drive home, drive back to North Jackson, drive back to Lexington, drive back south each and every day. Our goal and our challenge is to bring value to this area where we can get those folks to stop and spend money where they make their money. If we can achieve that, then the houses and those things will come from it, but we have to first start with the job creation in the retail. As I said, I've been, I've been learning as I go, and one of the things that I've learnt a lot in the last, well, a great, a great deal in the last six months or a year or so, is that it's very, it's almost impossible for me to offer CRA and I and your help to actually revitalize East Jackson without first revitalizing Lane College. Lane College is a centerpiece of East Jackson, just as downtown Jackson, the government offices and the hospital, and now the lift is important to downtown. So for us to have an opportunity to really do the things we need to do, we have to revitalize Lane College. So for the last year or so, I've been to four conferences all across America, learning about something called New Market Tax Credits. That's essentially the, what, what, what was the catalyst to allow us to have the lift and have the things you have going on downtown Jackson, and, and Jackson General Hospital was a leveraging factor to allow them to get started down here. What I propose is the very same thing. New markets, Lane College in the East Jackson Quarter is ideally suited for federal New Market Tax Credits. And I've already been in partnership with a young lady named Bridget Chisholm, company's called B W C, she's out of Greensboro, North Carolina, she is one of the probably most respected, highly respected and capable consultants for New Market Tax Credits in the United States of America. We have become a partner, she's already been to Lane twice and met with the president. Right now, Lane College is finalizing their contract with her, hopefully have that finalized in the next week or so when they have the next board meeting. Once that happens, we then would be full speed ahead getting New Market Tax Credits for Lane College. This is going to revolutionize and revitalize this college in ways that never, in our lifetime, we couldn't imagine. It's, it would allow us to not only revitalize Lane College, all the money derived from the new markets will go back into Lane College in East Jackson. None of that money would be taken out, used anywhere else. All the dollars will be revitalized and used in that quarter, and as I said, it's going, it's going to make Lane far more competitive, it's going to make Lane have green technology all over campus, it's going to make, allow Lane to do solar panels, to change dormitories, to, and, and install bathrooms, to do all sorts of things that's going to be a huge benefit for Lane, to let, help them recruit more and better students. With that, we're also hoping to use creative financing and creative partnerships with the Jackson Mountain County School in the city to develop a P three, which is basically private-public partnership. That's, that would basically is exactly the same thing that was done downtown, the way it worked, and it's worked extremely well. We want to copy, as I said earlier. In this business, there's nothing new, it's only copycats. And so what, and so what I plan on doing is copying success, and as Mr. Crocker, Mr. Turley, Mr. Turley's done this several times in the Memphis Quarter and developed downtown Memphis this way, we're going to copy that same model and use it in Lane College to bring in federal dollars to, to change East Jackson. And the last piece is going to be to also bring houses. The retail and the development is going to go first. We're hoping to partner with Jackson Mountain County Schools to build a middle school, elementary school on the campus that's currently J C M, that'll be owned by Lane and leased back to the school system for a seven-year period of time. back to the school system for a seven-year period of time. After that, new market drop off, then the school can be acquired by the school system. But the great thing about that, Lane will be able to leverage that and do all these wonderful things on the campus. We hope to also do a retail center on the corner of Lane and, uh, Roar, right down the corner, Lane and Roar, twenty thousand square foot retail center, and we hope to leave that center vacant until we can go out and recruit businesses that Lane wants to have there. And if you think about this idea, and I appreciate the mayor allowing me to come in here unannounced into his office and brief him, brief him on this, and he was very supportive, so I appreciate his supportiveness of it. But the great thing about all of this that we're talking about doing, Lane would be the owner of the retail center, Lane would be the beneficiary of all the dollars brought in from the new markets. So I'm very, very excited about the potential, very, very excited about the future. I think this platform would allow us to do things, as I stated, that has not been done in our lifetime. It's gonna take all of our help, it's gonna truly be a partnership, a P-three partnership, public-private partnership for us to make this work, but Bridget has already acquired ten million dollars in new market commitment for Lane College already. Our goal is twenty to twenty-five million, and I think that would, that will, if you know our new markets work, probably about twenty-five percent of the dollars will come back to Lane. So if we were to go out and get twenty-five million dollar Lane with the address, get seven, eight million dollars that they don't have to pay back, that they can use to reinvigorate their campus, and that's the goal, that's the goal. So I will shut up, and if anyone have any questions, feel free to ask me any questions. Uh, as I said, this is, this is, the Lane project is strictly, uh, very conceptual now. The details will be done relatively quickly once we, uh, get, get Bridget and, and WMC on a contract with Lane, but it'll move really, really fast. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hunt. Any, any questions? Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
Mr. Hunt, good morning.
Thank you, sir.
Excellent presentation.
Yes, sir.
There's not many questions, but it's a pep talk.
Okay.
Through all the hoops and hurdles, my family was in business for fifty-one years. Don't you quit.
No, sir.
Don't you quit.
It's not in my.
You have a job to do.
Yes, sir.
To help re- revitalize CRA District Two. We have rooftops over there. Understand what you say about the industries over there.
Yes, sir.
We can make, they can stop if they're incented.
Exactly.
At those restaurants.
Yes, sir.
Don't quit.
No, sir.
With respect to Lane College, Lane College is the crown jewel of East Jackson.
Yes, sir.
If we can get the surrounding area around Lane College revitalized, remodeled with new projects also, it would help significantly, but don't you quit. Don't give up. We need you.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Councilman.
Play a major part, and you have a board of directors, and we have recognized them, uh, Mayor Gis, uh, board of directors with the CRA. Work with them and don't quit.
Yes, sir.
We, you stood before us last year, and you said bigger and better things this year.
Yes, sir.
Don't you quit.
Yes, sir.
We're depending on you.
Yes, sir.
All right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Quitting is not in my DNA, Councilman, so that's not an issue.
Any other, any other questions or comments, Council?
Yeah, if I could, I'd like to thank Stan for one, for your leadership, uh, with the CRA board. You've been working real hard with us. Uh, thank both developer, uh, District One and District Two for the best development for what you do, because it's been a fight, but I think we've stood together, and especially District Two has been a battle. I know some of the people have been unhappy, but we're working hard and I think the success is, is coming. I think it's take a little longer, uh, but you stood the test of time and you still working. I'd like to also thank our board members, uh, Mr. Money, can you please stand? He's one of our board members that worked real hard and, uh, if any, I don't have any more answers here, but thank you all for what you do.
Same, sir.
Oh, yeah, same, yeah, thank you also, but, you know, it's been a, been a struggle, but we're, we're, we're working together. I want to thank you all for what you're doing, though.
Councilman, thank you so much. I just wanna say this publicly, you know, Stan Pyle is sitting to my right here is a, he, he's just a world of knowledge, great guy. I cannot begin to tell you how many times he gives me prep talks and says, David, you know, it's been twenty-five, thirty years since anything's been done in this area. Don't think he gonna do it in, in two years, it's not gonna happen. Just, just gotta set a plan, follow the plan, and the CRA and the leadership of the CRA has been just wonderful, been very helpful, and everything I bring to them that makes sense, some, some stuff doesn't, quite frankly, uh, do we, you know, but for everything that we brought to them that makes sense, they've approved. As I said earlier, it's just some things with the laws the way they are, we just can't move forward on. And it's not that we don't want to or they don't want to, it's just the law, and you gotta follow the law.
Right. David, thank you, thank you for your efforts in, in District Two, and I'll, let me just echo the accolades to Stan, and the CRA has a hard-working committee, and many of them have served a long number of years on that, uh, on that board, and I appreciate every, every one of them's efforts and continuing efforts and continuing to, to build our city. David, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I had a made his first readings, ordinance on first reading, consideration of ordinance to annex resolution to adopt the plan of service, and an ordinance to zone an area referred to as Deaton Generally Located East of Bray's Lane on the east side of Rain Springs Road. Proposed zoning for Deaton Annexation Area is I-two. Stan?
All right. So that's a mouthful and it sounds complex, but this is really not. It's, it's basically taking care of some housekeeping on a piece of property that's majority is in the city, but between Rain Springs Road and, and this property is some abandoned railroad right-of-way that was in between the city limits and Rain Springs Road. So the corporate limits, you see this dark line here, it ran on the east margin of that, of that abandoned railroad, but it didn't include that, that right-of-way. Uh, they said it's not up on their monitors, Marcus, so if you can help with that, it'd help. Um, and so we're, we're just cleaning that up, we're taking it to the margin of Rain Springs, so it reflects the, the entire property that's being utilized as being in the city. Also, as a part of that, we're also consolidating the zoning under that one scheme that's already zoned in the city, which is I-two. Um, so you see on the next item, we'll get into zoning, but, uh, as a part of the annexation, it's been presented to the planning commission. They are recommending the annexation to you. Also, the plan of service has been reviewed by the planning commission, and they are recommending that to you, and also the zoning of I-two upon its annexation.
Okay, this is a, an ordinance on first reading, so if there's a motion to approve, then we'll.
So move.
We'll go, second to that.
Second.
We have a second. Uh, let's, ordinance on first reading requires a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and ask, is anyone present who would like to be heard on this matter, be in support of or in opposition to? If you'll make it known at this time, I'll be happy to call on you. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Okay, um, these are not really questions, 'cause I, I know the answers to most of them, 'cause you and I have talked.
Yes, ma'am.
But I think sometimes people watching in my district, and this concerns my district, they want to know these things, so it's a good way to get it out.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, this property doesn't involve any, um, residential houses whatsoever.
No, ma'am.
Okay, um, uh, Mr. Henderson has owned this property, and he is in the process of selling it.
Yes, ma'am.
The new owner does not plan to develop anything there other than maybe some additional storage buildings, which are already.
That's the plans right now, yes, ma'am.
And then the feedback that you have gotten from folks in that district, they have not had a problem with these.
No, ma'am. But after we explained it to them, because any, anytime anybody gets a card in the mail and they see annexation, you know, they go, oh, what is happening?
Right.
But, but with the change in the legislation at the state level, the city cannot annex property of their own initiative. In other words, we cannot go out and grab property for annexation. The only way we can process an annexation is if it's requested. So the only property involved in this annexation is the requested piece, which is the narrow piece that you see highlighted on the map there, which, uh, doesn't involve anyone else. Uh, and so that's, that's the only way we can do it, so, uh, that's all that, uh, we're doing here. This will not lead to other annexations, 'cause again, we can't process any other annexations unless somebody requests it, so, uh, so they don't have to fear, okay, this is gonna lead to the city doing more things. Well, no, we're only, we're only taking care of, this is really housekeeping. Uh, and the next item you see is a further housekeeping measure that we're gonna be doing, but it does not involve anyone else other than Dennis Henderson and his property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other, we have a motion, second, any other questions? Council, please vote.
Motion passes with eight members in favor, one abstaining.
Item two, new business is related item, consideration of ordinance to rezone property located at six oh two South Missouri Street from RG one one C, General Residential Conservation District, I-two Light Industrial District, point seven oh plus acres, and from RG one, General Residential District, two I-two Light Industrial District, point five oh plus acres, two tracts containing a total of one point two acres, more or less, submitted by Dennis Henderson of Deaton, Inc.
All right, this is another cleanup. Um, at the very top of that area that you just saw, we're, we're looking at annexation, there's a portion of that railroad right-of-way that was already in the city, uh, that was zoned, um, RG one and, uh, with also historic overlay on it. That, again, that was just a continuation of the zoning that was across the, the Rain Springs or, or South Missouri when you get in the, uh, in the city, but, uh, it's just to clean that up, because again, it just reflected the, the railroad right-of-way, and because that property is devoted to the mini storage and the adjacent property is zoned that way, we're just consolidating the zoning under one scheme. Again, it doesn't involve anybody else's property other than Dennis Henderson's.
And no residential.
No residential, no, ma'am, just the railroad right-of-way in the area between the mini storage and the, and the, and the east margin of Rain Springs, South Missouri.
Motion to approve.
Say we have a motion to approve, this is also an ordinance on first reading.
And this was presented to the planning commission, they are recommending it to you.
Okay, the, the ordinance on first reading will require a public hearing, so let me open the public hearing, see if there's anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to or in support of this particular ordinance. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Any additional questions? If not, council, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight members in favor, one abstaining.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Stan. Second readings, we have none. New business, presentation to council on C.T.-O-two-five-three, sounds like a state deal, closing document on nine million, uh, Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund loan required by State Controller's Office.
Right, and there's no vote to be taken on this. I just have to chill in the minutes of the meeting. I want to hear a good, that, or that it has been shown.
Okay, council, I'll have a look at that. Any questions on it? If not, you all have had a chance to view it, so we'll move on. Uh, Ms. White, we have a consideration of pre-disaster contract.
In two thousand and three, when that tornado first came through, uh, it took a lot of manpower to get the area, City of Jackson cleaned back up. It took a lot of time, and about six months after that happened, we decided to write a pre-disaster contract, uh, which was approved by the city council, and we hoped we'd never have to use it again, but the purpose being that when we had a disaster, all we'd have to do is pick up the phone, and the prices are already set, FEMA's already looked at everything, we just pick up the phone and call the contractor and tell them to, to start mobilization, start picking up all the debris and getting the city back to the way it was. The contract has been very helpful. Uh, the current one expires next week, and this contract, we wrote, um, we had two bids, Delta Contracting and Ford Construction Company. Ford, Ford Construction Company was the lowest and best bid, but as the mayor pointed out when I was talking to him about this, if a tornado or something came through that was so devastating, we would probably have to use both companies. And as you see, all of the, on the bid schedule, we have all the prices for Mobe and Demo, the removal of the burnable debris, non-burnable debris, and we've got these unit prices so that when something, when or if something does happen, we've got the prices. We can work quicker with FEMA, we can get the city cleaned up in a really quick amount of time.
We found out over the years, this is the best way to go. We hope we won't have to use it, and if we don't need it, certainly won't use it, but if we've got somebody ready to go, that certainly facilitates getting our city back together. Um, any questions on this particular contract?
What's the time limit on the contract? Is there one?
All of the contracts we make are one year with five, one-year options to renew.
Okay, so we could renew it a year from now if we wanted to, or wait five years?
This contract is in effect for five years.
Thank you.
Okay, is there, we have a motion, just a second?
Second.
Okay, a second discussion on the motion. Not, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three is consideration of contract for Ballistic Fest.
We took.
We have the motion and a second discussion, council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Uh, item four is consideration of contract for administrative services for health, dental, HIPAA, COPRA, vision, and stop-loss reinsurance.
Stacy Stone, our risk manager.
Miss White?
She's here to explain this contract and her recommendation to the city council.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. The Risk Management Department's recommendation would be to, um, continue the contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Um, we felt that they were, they were the best, um, overall price, and, um, that's who we would recommend. Um, the other, um, proposal that we received from, related to the health, COPRA, HIPAA, and admin fees was from Aetna. Um, I did have, I, I think I provided a spreadsheet there. I need to make one correction on Aetna's, um, admin fee price. Um, we had thirty-five thirty, it's actually twenty-oh-two. Um, there was a misunderstanding, um, and that, that was their quote, the thirty-five thirty was, um, without pharmacy, and I had misunderstood that, so I apologize for that error. However, I have recalculated the overall estimated annual cost based on the current enrollment, um, and with the stop-loss fee, um, that you see in the second column, um, the Aetna price would be, um, eight-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars, so it would reduce that, however, it is still about a hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand dollars more than Blue Cross Blue Shield, so we would still recommend Blue Cross Blue Shield on that. Um, the dental admin fee, you can see the prices there with Blue Cross Blue Shield, um, they guaranteed their rate for two years, which would, um, would help, and we felt like that was a good thing. Uh, we know how to plan for the future. And then for the vision premium, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield and VSP were the same, um, premium, however, uh, we feel Blue Cross would be better in this case because they allow for more in-network providers, which gives the employees more options on where to go, um, including some walk-in facilities that allow for faster service for the employees.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve, a second discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Item five is our board appointment after this month under the Jackson Municipal Regional Planning Commission. We have the reappointment of Beverly Absher Bone.
Move the approval.
Second. Motion, second discussion, council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
And under the continued board appointments, uh, Jackson Community Redevelopment Agency, the agency that we was talking about, Willie Moore, his reappointment, and Becky Lake is a real point.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion, council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay, uh, Ms. Bell, have a budget amendment, item six up next.
We have two budget amendments before you today. The first one is for the Civic Center for the repair of the risers in the amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-fourty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. This will require draw on fund balance.
So vote.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on that?
Do you have a question?
Sure.
Mayor, um, is my understanding, I think there, we're rush, or we're rushing to try Mayor. Um, is my understanding, I think there, we're rush, or we're rushing to try to get this in before...
Miss Tennessee.
Right. And not arguing that we need the seating. I'm sure, um, that that's the case. But am I understanding correctly that the actual seats will not be in that deadline or timeline?
I would call upon Mr. Dawson or Tosh Newman to address that. Um, I only got the financial information to address the budget amendments. So, let me, let me get one of them.
Tosh, come on up and, and let the council know what's happening to the temporary risers at the Civic Center. They've been there since day one, construction of the building, which was in the early seventies.
Nineteen seventy-three, to be exact. Uh, no, Ross, they all will not be completed by Miss Tennessee. What they're gonna do, the company, um, if approved, they're gonna come in and harvest some parts from the existing seats that work well, replace the seats that don't work well. And so, the harvested seats will go back with, with new seating. Um, the way they're set up now, you can't remove one seat and replace it. You have to extract an entire row. So, what they'll do is they'll come in and get the absolute worst-looking ones that we have and put new ones in. Once the Miss Tennessee pageant is over, that will allow them enough time to come in. There's nine hundred and twenty-two seats.
Okay.
So, that's kinda why the timeframe is, is tight on there.
Okay. I got you. And then, and Tosh, you've been helpful with me, kinda understand the whole situation. Um, I guess I'm also curious is, in your opinion, is this the, the need, like, I know there's a lot of needs with the Civic Center, and we wanna make it the best it can be. Is this the most pressing need at the time? Or is it, and there may be kind of a plan of to step back and see, hey, we need a roof. We need all these different things.
There, there's several. Uh, we, we've already kinda started to work on the roof a little bit for what we can. Uh, obviously, the Civic Center's a big building. So, anytime you start pricing improvements, it's gonna be up there. But the risers, in my opinion, it's more of aesthetics and safety. Uh, I don't know if you've been to any of a, event there with the risers, but you almost feel like you've been diagnosed with vertigo every time you get on it. Um, and it's, for our staff, we've had a staff member lose a partial finger. Um, and so, it's, in my opinion, it, it is. It, from what the company has told me, we're gonna save in tons of man-hours, uh, as far as how much it takes to put them in and, and take them out. So, um, I, I think it is a need. You know, we got a Travis Trick concert coming up. So, if you pay ninety dollars for a seat that's got duct tape on it, you're not gonna be happy. Um, so, I, I do think it's a need.
Along goes line, and this could be a Karen question, but don't you all submit a capital budget?
We do. And this was submitted as capital, and it was rejected.
Okay. So, so going forward and addressing some of Ross's concerns, would you submit that in your capital budget going forward?
Yes.
These repairs and try to get in front of some of this?
And, and when, this process was kind of already started before I got over there. I didn't get there. I, I was moved over there on January twenty-fifth. So...
That's no excuse.
Yeah. I got you. So, the, the process was already started. So, I mean, it's, it's just one of those things where, you know, I, I think, I, I know most of you would like for the Miss Tennessee pageant to stick around. I, I would too. Uh, but yes, going forward, these would definitely be capital improvements.
Sure. And, uh, the safety is the most concerned.
It is, in my opinion. Um, I'd rather prevent a phone call from Cory B. Trotz instead of getting one. So, that's kinda where my mind frame is right now.
You know, the funding for, for this immediate repair will, will be coming out of existing funds. There'll be no new funding, you know, set aside for it. The funds that we already have from savings and some other bids that we've taken, uh, some funding that's remaining from the capital, what, three years ago? Uh, so, there'll be no new funding required for this. We feel like we need to go ahead, and especially for the safety of our patrons and the understructure of those temporary risers. They're very volatile. Uh, okay. Any other, uh, any other questions relative to this budget amendment? Okay. We have a motion? We do? A second? We do. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes with seven members in favor, one voting no, and one not present. You, you gonna vote, Johnny?
Yeah, I'm voting for it. I'm sorry.
Okay. It was eight to one.
Okay. The second amendment that you have before you today is for the community development. One of the things our auditors have had us do is to work very closely with Jackson Housing on the community development block grants and home program grants. So, this is basically a clean amendment that Latonya and I have worked together on. Budget amendment for the community development fund for carryover funds from previous years for the community development block grant in the amount of, uh, forty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. And for the home program in the amount of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion for approval, property second. Any discussion from council? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Bell. Final item on the agenda is invoices over ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
A motion is second. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.